Good evening. It's now 6:00 PM, April 11th, and I'd like to call to order this committee, the whole of the Champaign County Board. Can I please have a roll call?
Esri.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Hartke.
Yeah.
James.
Here.
Jay.
Here.
Kibler. Langenheim.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
McGuire.
He's here.
He was here.
He's here.
Michaels.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Petrie.
Here.
Quisenberry.
Here.
Richards. Rosales.
Here.
McGuire.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Kurtz.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum. I'd like, what's that? I'm sorry.
Oh, Alex.
Oh.
Here.
Burksen.
Oh. Usually I'm the last.
Mr. McGuire's here, too.
Mr. McGuire's here.
I didn't get to finish.
Burksen.
Here.
Carter.
Here.
Coort.
Well, we had a quorum then, we have a quorum now. So, we're okay on both counts. Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mitchell is here. Okay, I'd like approval, oh, you're already ahead of me there, Max? Okay. Approval of the minutes, I have first, Max, a second, and Geraldo. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda?
Agreed.
So moved by Mr. James, second by Lloyd. Okay. Any changes, discussion on the agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any public participation this evening? I don't see any, I don't have any cards, so we'll move past public participation into communications. I know that Lorraine has one. Please, turn on your mic, Lorraine.
I'd like the County Board to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Alau Sheel, who served on the County Board for 41 years.
And our condolences go out to the Sheel's family as well, on his passing. Other communications, on a personal note, first, I want to thank the Regional Planning Commission staff and the staff here at Brookins for the wonderful cards that I received during my incarceration at home and in the hospital. It was wonderful, thank you so much, and also for those who took time out to send me their emails and cards and phone calls, it was very heartening, and thank you so very much for your concern. But as you can see, here I am, sorry to disappoint you, but here I am, so thanks again, I really do appreciate it. Is there any other communication at this point? Okay, let's move on. I'd like to bring Mr. Quisenberry to the center stage, and I have the gavel for him, right here.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz.
You're very welcome.
All right. Welcome to the policy portion of our agenda. Is it on?
Yes.
I'll speak closer to it. Yeah, the light's not on, but it is working. All right. The first order of business for the policy, personnel and appointments portion of the agenda, is we have a number of fire protection district appointments, and I would encourage an omnibus motion for items A1 through 14. Okay, moved by Mr. James, second by Ms. Burksen. Mr. Chair, would you make your appointments, please?
Yes, thank you. Let's start off, number one, Philo Fire Protection District, the applicant is Clifford Gorman. Thomas Borough Fire Protection District, Mervyn Mayer. Sangamon Valley Fire Protection District, Roger Pontoon Jr. St. Joseph Stanton Fire Department, Norman Paul Ivesdale, Jeff White, Eastern Prairie, Patricia Chancellor, Posodom, Dennis Butler, Sadoris, Frederick Sebold, Tolono, Roger Hayden, Edge Scott, Mark McDuffie, Windsor Park, Todd Courtney, Ogden Royal, Ken Ostaber, Scott, Bernie Maximin, and Broadlands, Lacy Taylor.
All right, is there any discussion regarding these appointments? Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. Mostly this is because I wanted on the record with a hope that over time we can get more applicants and applicants that have a less, what seems to be conflict of interest in their many roles that I read that many of these applicants have. I acknowledge the fact that it is difficult to find people to serve in some of these unique roles, but I do think it's in the best interest if these jobs are spread around, many different people taking them on. I noticed one gentleman has been in the role for something like 35 years, and I do think it would be nice to bring on new people who can learn from this, an individual who's been in a role for 35 years, and share that knowledge base. And so, it's with that that I'd like to see it on the record, and the second I'd like to see on the record is the new amendment to the Open Meetings Act that went into effect a little over a year ago, that anybody who's appointed to such bodies, as we're making appointments this evening, within the window of time of 90 days of appointment, need to take the Online Open Meetings Act training and produce a certificate that this has been accomplished, and it's not clear to me yet if there has been a process put in place on how and when that certificate gets presented after their appointment. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That's unanimous. Then, I would also entertain an omnibus motion for A15 and 16, appointing members to a Fine Arts Review Committee for Lincoln Hall and for the new Electrical and Computer Engineering Building. Lorraine, second by Astrid. All right, Mr. Chair.
Fine Arts Review Committee for Lincoln Hall Restoration, Project 830010327, this is for Shawna Carey and Melvin Skavala, and the Fine Arts Review Committee, Electrical Computer Engineering Building, Project 830-010-331, same applicant, Shawna Carey and Melvin Skavala.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Petrie.
Yes. I made a great deal of effort to send this out to various people, so I want to acknowledge my disappointment that we only have two applicants for two committees, and these two people will serve on both of these committees. I really would have liked to have had at least four applicants, four different applicants. Second is that Melvin did not indicate on his application that he is employed at the university and was very involved in the Lincoln Hall renovation. That would, could lead to the question if there's any conflict of interest that might arise with his role at the university in relationship to what he might be doing on this committee. Ms. Carey did indicate on her application that should a conflict of interest arise, that she would not act on whatever is before them, so she did acknowledge that potential, but he has not acknowledged that on his application.
Mr. Carter.
I still have a concern of your point is, well, the point is, I'm gonna vote for them, but the point is, somebody asked me next week, something happened, but do you know these individuals? No, I never see them. What they look like, I never see them. So, there's still a problem. I don't mind voting for them, at least they could, they could come and introduce themselves and say something, so if I'm questioned, I could say that, yeah. But now, I could see this evening, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't even know who these individuals are.
I can't disagree with that, Mr. Carter. I would assume that if you wanted to be appointed, it would, it would be nice to come, address the body, or at least be available, but in any case, any other comments or questions? Ms. Burksen.
I don't see how being involved in the reconstruction of Lincoln Hall would be a conflict of interest with putting art in it. For one thing, the state money is there, nobody has a financial interest in it, and they are separate operations.
Mr. Alex.
I would agree with Ms. Burksen on that, I'm having trouble divining what conflict could exist, other than potentially the artist, you know, having a financial interest in somebody who's trying to sell art for the project. I mean, I don't, the fact that they work in the building, or are familiar with the building, or participated in remodeling the building, I don't see how they're economically benefiting from that. I mean, frankly, if somebody works in the building, has to walk by the thing every day, it seems more likely they're gonna pick something good.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. All right, no other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. The next item is just for your information, from the Nelson Moore Fairfield Drainage District, resignation of John Nelson. Moving on to Section B, I'd entertain a motion to accept the county clerk's report and place it on fire?
On fire?
Mr. McGuire, did you move that, as I was misstating what I was, I've got fire protection on the mind, and seconded by Ralph? Okay, any, any questions regarding that report? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, moving right along. Also, we have the Administrative Services Monthly Report in Section C, number one, I'd entertain a motion to accept that and place it on file. All right, moved and seconded. Any questions for Deb? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right. Next item is just for your information, from the Nelson Moore Fairfield Drainage District, resignation of John Nelson. Moving on to Section B, I'd entertain a motion to accept the county clerk's report and place it on fire?
On fire?
Mr. McGuire, did you move that, as I was misstating what I was, I've got fire protection on the mind, and seconded by Ralph? Okay, any, any questions regarding that report? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, moving right along. Also, we have the Administrative Services Monthly Report in Section C, number one, I'd entertain a motion to accept that and place it on file. All right, moved and seconded. Any questions for Deb? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is, I'd entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Job Content Evaluation Committee for the classifications of the Champaign County GIS positions.
Agreed.
Moved by Mr. Alex, seconded by Ms. Burksen. You will recall that we referred these jobs to that Job Content Evaluation Committee two months ago, I think, and I have had an opportunity to sit down and look through these with Deb, looked at some comparables with surveys on campus, they, they seem to make sense, they, they don't create any issues at the moment, and so, at this point, if you have any questions or comments, let us know. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, I don't believe we have any other business, and for the Chair's report, I will, I will mention that I have had some ongoing conversations with Ms. Bucy and Mr. Kurtz regarding the appointment process and things that we can do that would add value to it without creating too much more bureaucracy to deal with, and at this point, we're, we are also taking in information about a way to reduce paper. Many, many of us have moved to using tablets or laptops to receive the packets and budget materials and such, we think it would, in the long term, probably make sense for us to try to convert wholly to that, but we're still, still gathering information, Ms. Petrie has provided some, some links to some information that we're including in that, if you have information with regard to it, we'd welcome it, and with that, I think we have, for the, for the consent agenda, we have everything but the Fine Arts Review Committee items. Yes?
Can I just make a general comment? I understand what Patsy's talking about when it comes to people for these appointments and whatnot, but if you look in the rural districts, which many of these are, they couldn't even fill terms for their trustees or their board members, so unfortunately, unfortunately, we've got good people that want to do them, but it might be difficult that the mindset is such that they've all, it works, and so, maybe that's another reason why we're really not getting very many, is because there aren't people stepping forward, not even in the trustee positions in some of those communities.
Yes, I know, on at least one occasion in the past, we had to find someone who didn't live in a drainage district to serve on the drainage district, 'cause everybody in the drainage district either didn't want to do it, or wouldn't apply, or, so, yes, point, point taken. And with that, I am done for policy. Thanks.
Thank you, James. All right, let's move on to finance. Mr. Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz, and good evening. First item under finance is the Treasurer's Report, as usual. Mr. Welch, would you like to comment on your reports?
Good evening. My reports, as usual, are on file, on my website, but there is one, one thing on the report I want to talk about briefly, and that is, this board, a couple of months ago authorized a loan between Public Safety and General Corporate Fund of up to $1.5 million. Just wanted to report that on April the 2nd, I did, in fact, loan General Corporate $1 million from Public Safety. I don't think we'll need any more than $1 million. It's nice to have the $500,000 in reserve if we do need it, but it is also exactly what we did last year, April of last year, we also had $1 million, and we will repay that by November 30 of this year. Second item, many of you may be familiar with, or saw in the paper, where Provena, which is now called President's Health, has got a refund for the years 2004 and 2006. If you remember, we have been collecting information since 2002, payable in 2003, for the collections they have each year, and waiting for some kind of judgment based on the courts, or in this case, the Department of Revenue, to determine if Provena will get any of this money back. 2002 year, if you can remember, was decided by the Supreme Court, Illinois Supreme Court, and so, 2002 has been taken care of. So, this is the second time the refunds actually come through, based on a ruling. It was an administrative law judge in the hearing section of Department of Revenue, and he ruled on 2004 and 2006. For those two years, if you just looked at the total collections for, for those two years, it was $2.4 million. The actual ruling came down as a refund of $1.183 million. So, I didn't make that refund on, I should say, 97% of that money is one Tiff district in the city of Urbana. The cost to Champaign County was $3,805, and General Corporate portion of that was $1,070. So, gets you a little bit up to date where we are, they're, they still have an outstanding ruling waiting between, before the Department of Revenue for 2010, and so, we don't know what that's gonna be. So, it continues on. I'm sure I'll be long gone by the time this Provena thing is all done, said and done. Hopefully, I will be. And finally, this time next month, when I, when I come in front of you, you'll already have tax bills in front of you. Tax bills will be mailed, will be mailed out May the 3rd, you'll have two due dates, of June the 3rd and September the 3rd. Be our 11th, I believe, straight year of being on time, which is a product of the assessors and the township assessors, the board review, the supervisor assessments, county clerk does a tremendous amount of work in this field, and of course, the treasurer's office and the IT department, so, we work collaboratively, we meet on a monthly basis at a tax cycle group, and I think that's a really good reason that tax bills go out on time. Not only is it helpful to us as a taxing body to get tax money starting in May, but it also gives the taxpayers the opportunity to have three months in between installments. I can guarantee that there are several counties in the state of Illinois where they get tax bills out, and you have a bill due in August and September, or September and October, or all of it at one time. I've seen all kinds of things go on. So, we're fortunate that we work well together here, and just wanted to report that this is another year that looks like it's going in the right direction as well. So, I'd ask that my report be accepted and placed on file, and I'd be sure glad to answer any questions if I could.
Moved by Mr. Jay, second by Mr. Mitchell. Would anybody like to ask questions? The treasurer. Ms. Michaels.
As we're winding down receiving last year's taxes, the delinquency, is that up or down from before? I mean, it seems to be that we don't have as many tax sales, but maybe I'm wrong.
Actually, tax sale items have kind of steadily increased since 2006, but in small increments. I think now, I think last year we had 1,278 parcels that went to the tax sale in real estate, 157 mobile homes that went to tax sale. Of the 1,278, 1,257 were purchased at the tax sale. The average weighted bid was 3.09, could have been as high as 18%, could be as low as zero. If you remember Madison County, that the treasurer's just pleaded guilty in federal court, and we're going to prison based on the fact that his tax sales had an average of 18%, but he's also getting $300,000 in campaign contributions from the tax buyers. So, he's going where he deserves to go. But no, I believe that the tax sale has been as low as 570 items, and it's slowly, I can't think, incremental, up, up to almost 1,300 parcels.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter.
I just have a sort of a quick question. I remember when the housing market right here just shot up, boom, then it turned around and fell down. How do you adjust to that?
Well, a little out of my realm, I mean, I'm a, I'm a collection, I don't do much of the assessing, but I can tell you that what people don't really realize is that it's an average, it's a three-year average, and it's by neighborhood, so, they, what, from what I understand is that the, the swings and valleys are not as much as you might think they are, when you see them in terms of three years timeframe. One year, you can see a drop, maybe, somebody will come in and they'll say to me, oh, my value's down 30%.
Right.
But if you average it out over three years, it's not quite as bad as you might think it might be. So, I think that's what people, people miss, is an edge, it's done in a, in a neighborhood kind of mode, not an individual house. They don't price chase, the assessors are not allowed to say, your house sold for X, so what we're gonna assess it at X. They're not allowed to do that, so, that's putting on a hat I don't actually have. I'm a treasurer, not an assessor, but I've been accused of both. I'd rather be a treasurer.
Any more questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, and I, we do sincerely appreciate the tax bills getting out on time, I mean, I don't exactly like seeing it show up in my mailbox, but compared as, it is very unfortunate how few counties are able to do that, and I think it speaks well to your staff and the, and the rest of the county folks.
Entire tax cycle, that's right.
The whole cycle that we're able to do that.
You bet.
While we have you here, we have a resolution authorizing County Board Chair to assign a mobile home tax sale certificate of purchase for a parcel number 25-900-0042. May I have a motion to approve that, Mr. Esri and Mr. Kibler? Daniel, want to talk about that at all?
Sure, we've seen this before, often, this is a mobile home that went to tax sale, no one purchased it, the expiration of the, I'm trying to think of the word, but it's the, you know, redemption period, I'm sorry, is two years, and so, that ran out, the county actually doesn't take title to it, but it takes ownership of the certificate, and we're now going to a, a auction, in that this person paid, what, $695 as their trailer, now going to a auction in that this person paid, what, $695 as their trailer. So we're just transferring the title to them. It's a good thing because it gets it back on the protective rolls and it'll be tax money coming in from that point on. Might often add that the average mobile home bill is $74.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
I'll move on to the auditor, who has his reports on the website and will, as usual, speak to us about them.
If you have any questions about them, I'd just ask that you accept them and place it on file.
May I have a motion to do so? Mr. Mitchell and Mr. James. I just wanted to point out to the board, three months into the year, we expect to see that we'd be at about 25 percent on expenditures. Looks like we're about 28, so we're doing pretty well there. You can go through the line items and see what we're over budget and under budget on. Obviously, revenues are significantly below that because we get so much money as a result of the property tax process, which won't start showing up until May, as Mr. Walsh said. So, excuse me, Mr. Welch said. If there are no questions, all in favor of accepting the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. And I placed the bad purchases report on your desks. If you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to try and answer it. Otherwise, email me, call me. I'll give you answers next week. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. We have a nursing home monthly report, including some narrative information, which was provided by the Champaign County Nursing Home Board Directors. Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Kibler here. If there are any questions related to what's going on with the nursing home board.
Mr. Hartke.
Did I say, I'm looking at you. That's why I said that. Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell are here and can answer questions about the recent nursing home board directors meeting. Mr. Quisenberry.
I would just like to thank Mr. Maxwell for his summary of the meetings. I find that very useful and I appreciate it.
Okay, now that I know everybody's names, any other comments or questions with regard to the nursing home report? Seeing none, I guess we'll have a motion to accept that and place it on file. Mr. Quisenberry and Ms. Petrie, did you have a question? Ms. Petrie.
Thank you very much. Would Mr. Hartke or Mr. Maxwell talk a bit more about the bad debt numbers for all of us?
Unfortunately, bad debt is part of the doing business at the nursing home, at any nursing home. You can't collect 100 percent. You have a certain amount that you can't collect. The current management of the nursing home has been going back, as far back as 2005, and trying to resolve those issues and has written off, I think, these numbers are coming off the top of my head, as I remember them from the other night, around $550,000 previously. And we're going to have to write another 292,000, I believe, currently. And then we should be getting close to being caught up. Obviously, nobody likes the bad debt. Part of it is because some of the debt wasn't followed up on, especially Medicaid and Medicare. In other words, if we'd have a problem that we couldn't get addressed as far as documentation, that sort of thing, eventually we would not be able to collect on those. And I think Medicare basically has to be touched at least once a year in order to keep it current. So, the current management is going back and trying to correct some of those old problems. It's making us look a little bad right now, but something has to be done. Ultimately, the goal will try to be, we can get our bad debt down in the half a percent of gross range. And I think right now, we're looking at around 2%. Still within the norms for nursing homes, at least that's what I've been told, but granted, it's simply not acceptable, at least in my way of thinking it isn't.
Yeah, Gary's point's right there about it is too high, but it is within range of what nursing homes have. There's a lot of reasons this happens. This is cases where we don't get the Social Security supplemental payment because according to federal law, Social Security goes to a person, not to an organization. We don't get to take people's Social Security. It goes to them. In some cases, it goes to their children, and these children don't always pay their parents' debts on time. That is some of this money. Others' money is people who pass away and don't get a final bill or don't have an inheritor who's going to be paying off their debt. Also, this is money that goes back total, I believe the numbers were, to 2003. A lot of this is catch-up from before MPA came into place, and there was a strict billing system, somebody constantly watching this stuff and billing out. As Gary said, it has to be billed regularly. You can't just come after somebody three years later after not sending them a bill and say, "You still owe us money." It's being worked on. It's part of the corporate, or the compliance program that we're working on as Board of Directors. The staff and especially Karen Nowke, who's the administrator, are very aware of this, and in the future, we're going to see this number come down.
But we're talking about almost $800,000? Is that, and why is it, we're just hearing about this, if it started back in 2004? Is there no line in this budget that discusses bad debt? I mean, and I know you're trying to just fill us in on what's happening, but...
My understanding is that, I mean, like, a lot of this debt happened before we even transferred the nursing home over to the Board of Directors. It was happening during times of very bad, poor management. It's being caught up on. As far as it being reported, I mean, this new number that we're dealing with now is the 292, which are two different years. That's 2011, 2012. The other numbers were written off in the past, so I'm sure that that information, I was not a member of this board, so I can't speak to as whether the information was dispersed or not, but I'm assuming it was. It would be required. So, this is not something we're really just finding about. It is something that though, you know, MPA's been dealing with a lot of fires over the last several years, and, you know, this is where we're getting to this one. You know, you can't put them all out at once. And this is definitely one we're going to hit on along with some other things. But I think that the policies have been put in place to start chasing this money down a little more. Plus, you know, there's also a point to be said that, you know, we aren't putting people who are Medicare-qualified out on the streets just because they can't, you know, that last check didn't come through immediately. So, that's part of the reason for our county nursing home to exist.
Ms. Michaels.
Thanks, guys, because it's really helped us to understand things, especially on the finance side here, too. I almost wonder, and I'm, maybe you don't know the answer, and that's fine, because I understand that you're not the management, you're a part of the board, but something that maybe bothers me a little bit is to wonder how old are the outstanding debts. Because I would think that people would get their income monthly now. Granted, maybe they're one or two months behind, but more than that, I think that would be very difficult. Maybe that's something you could suggest to the group when you talk to them later.
If I can make one kind of point on that. These, a lot of these are bills that are over a year, well, more than a year in arrears, and in fact, even further. And a lot of them are not people who are currently there and behind a couple of months. They're people who are no longer at the nursing home, and we've lost the ability to chase down the debts for some reasons. Again, you're absolutely right. These are things we need to work further on, and we are, so.
I think Ms. Schwartz, who's next.
Just a quick comment. I think Mr. Maxwell mentioned, a lot of that is actually Medicare and Medicaid. These will not be private people. And some of it, I don't know about the reason, but I know in 2008, when I looked at finances, some of the issues were, we were, and this is way before MPA, we were admitting people who were not authorized during times where we were sanctioned. And so they told us, "If you will admit anybody, you will not be paid for that." So, I'm not sure how much money specifically is from that, but some of these issues are. So, the big money, I think, is Medicare, Medicaid, much more than private people. Not that we shouldn't collect from them, but this is where the numbers are.
Mr. Harper.
Yeah, I appreciate what Josh and Gary are doing, but are you sure they can get a grasp, this MPA can get a grasp? I mean, we're talking $800,000 of taxpayer dollars.
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, okay.
Yes, I think they can. I mean, you know, it may take staffing up right now. They're telling us that they will not take staffing up, that we will not need a new person, that they can do it with current staff. The current staff has to be trained and be diligent, but, and that's something for management to watch over. And again, these are all things that will take time to come out in the end, but management and the board certainly will be overseeing.
All right. Thank you, Josh. Ms. Petrie.
Did either of you ask in relationship to the length of time one can go after a bad debt? Aren't there some points of diminishing return? Is it 10? For Social Security and for Medicaid?
Gary.
You're asking a legal question. I don't know. I think the practical, part of it is practical. One, you can't go after somebody that doesn't have anything to speak of. I mean, some of this debt is for that reason. One, you can't go after Medicaid and Medicare once, you just can't go after them. I mean, you can file your claims and you can resolve those claims with them in a timely manner, but once you get beyond that, either it's flat denied or you don't follow up in a timely manner and you go past the deadline to file, then your hope of collecting additional money from Medicaid and/or Medicare is pretty small.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, we've had this issue, I mean, there's been a bad debt line in the nursing home's budget for a long time. Any organization that serves people, especially without, people without a lot of money, is going to end up with some bad debts. It does raise an interesting question, though. If we submit, if the nursing home submits a claim to a payer, like insurance company, Medicaid, Medicare, and it's denied, is that considered a bad debt, or does that get essentially, is that going to be counted for somewhere else because it's something that shouldn't have been collectible in the first place?
No, the way they do revenues is as soon as they submit a claim, they count it as revenues.
Okay.
And so, what won't be paid will be...
So, anything that's a denied claim will ultimately get written off as bad debt?
Correct. So, expenses are later on. They don't match the timing. But revenues, as soon as the claim is submitted, they count it as revenues. And that's really part of the issue. So, if they wouldn't count it as revenues, it wouldn't look like bad debt.
Josh?
That's part of the reason we've instituted a pretty serious policy of not accepting Medicare pending, or Medicaid pending patients. People already have to have their Medicaid confirmed that they are going to get it paid before we let them in. Now, whether that'll be paid on time, of course, is part of the issue. But we do not allow anyone in until they have their Medicaid confirmed.
Yeah, but the other part is the rehab treatment that they get. So, you might be Medicaid-approved, but the Medicare part of that, of the rehab, and so that's a big chunk of the payments. And that's... Ed is calm.
Ms. Michaels.
Just as a suggestion, when we have these bad debts, whether it's Medicaid, Medicare, whatever it is, just thinking as a business here, you know, I don't know how MPA works things, but I would strongly suggest that after 128, they just get written off. And then if you collect it, you collect it. And you might suggest, or ask them what their policy is for how long, because then we'd know, we'd be doing something every year, even though it averages out to 80 a year, we'd be doing something every year, and it wouldn't just hit us like a couple hundred thousand all at once.
I think that's what they're driving towards.
Is it? Okay, great. Great. Great.
Ms. Burksen.
Some of the Medicare and Medicaid patients are eight and nine months in arrears, so you can't write them off in 120 days. A year, maybe.
I think, like Ms. Michaels' point is essentially, if we know, if it's very unlikely to be collected, it probably gives a more accurate sense of the financial condition of the home if we acknowledge that. And it sounds like that's where we're going. Are there any additional comments or questions? I guess, Mr. Carter.
Is this the state's problem on this Medicaid?
Yes, and the feds, but yeah.
Well, the patient, by understanding, what, don't they get that money from your part A and B?
No, that's Medicare. That's for seniors. Medicaid is for poor folks and not more by the state.
Oh, people that don't have any.
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you. Again, I think this was a productive discussion. I assume Mr. Hartke and Mr. Maxwell will take our comments back to the board, and we'll move forward. Appreciate everybody contributing their thoughts. Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of accepting the report and placing it on file, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to budget amendments and transfers. Our first is from the Animal Control Department. It's increased appropriations of $6,687 to account for the increase in fees billed by MetCAD. May I have a motion? Mr. Jay and Mr. Mitchell. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The next budget amendment is from Child Support Services, from the Circuit Clerk. Ms. Blakeman is here tonight, and I will ask her to speak to this. This is for $24,500 from the fund balance. While she's walking up here, I will point out, this is not the General Corporate Fund fund balance. This is the Child Support Services Fund fund balance.
I would make the motion if any of them...
Mr. Hartke, thank you, and Ms. Michaels.
Good evening. I'm Katie Blakeman, Circuit Clerk. This budget amendment proposal that I put forward is to pay for the data conversion cost from converting our child support case information from the County 400 system to JANO, which is the case management system that we use for all other case types. Currently, we have a maintenance contract with JANO that include, that we are paying $100,000 a year to JANO for that maintenance contract, and that includes the child support module. We have not, up to this point, used that child support module. We have continued to use the County 400 system, which means that my staff, the child support staff are actually using a separate system than everyone else. And it also means that the judiciary, the judges do not have access to that information from their terminals on the bench, and the State's Attorney's Office would not have access to that information when they are reviewing cases. So, this will allow the judges to be able to view child support payment history. It will also allow the State's Attorney's Office to better serve the child support enforcement cases. And this will also allow us to accept child support payments at the counter, which we're no, at this point, not able to do. Since everyone at the counter has access to JANO, we have to run back and get someone who is a child support specialist to come forward and assist with that. So, we will be better serving our customers that way. We also, at this time, pay $20,000 a year to IT for maintenance of that County 400 system. And the reason that we do that, and the reason that they maintain that system, is because the child support data is still on the AS400, the County 400, and not on JANO. So, once we make this conversion, they will no longer have to maintain that, and we will no longer have to appropriate $20,000 for that. So, this will come from the fund balance of the Child Support Service Fund, which, as of today, has a balance of $418,143. So, it is more than sufficient to cover this expenditure. So, we are asking for that for this month.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Were you raising a hand or just pointing Mr. Hartke out? Mr. Hartke.
First, I want to welcome you to the 21st century at the Circuit Clerk's office, finally. And let me get this clear. You're going to spend $24,500 and probably save 20 grand a year.
That's right.
Isn't it almost negligence that this hasn't been done before, folks? Thank you.
Well, I can say there were some programming issues that JANO had to resolve, and we, in fact, will be the first county to implement this, that's a JANO county, that will be implementing this child support module. So, at least to my knowledge, we will be.
Very diplomatic. Mr. Kibler.
Diplomatic indeed. As a data guy, I know that the transitions from one to another may take a considerable amount of time. What's the timeline to convert over? I assume the 20,000 savings won't happen this year, and maybe even not next year, because you have to maintain both systems until it's all good and done. How long until everything's moved over?
Well, as I spoke with Representative, the President of JANO yesterday, he said they would be ready to begin the conversion at the end of this month, and they anticipate that it would take about four weeks. So, actually, it could happen pretty quickly, and perhaps by the end of this next quarter, we'll be able to do, we'll be all ready to go with the child support cases on JANO.
So, there's no reason or any desire at this point to keep County 400 as a backup just in case for six-month period, anything like that?
That we'd probably, I think Andy Rhodes would be a better person to ask about that. We may need to hold on to that for a little bit longer, but just as a backup and to make sure we work out any kinks that there might be in using that, the JANO system.
Any other comments? Mr. Quisenberry.
Yeah, I have a question and then a comment. The 20,000 that's paid to IT for maintaining the system, I'd like to make sure that that's passing through to somewhere else, that IT has to then pay for it. Or is it, I mean, it's a zero-sum game. If we stop paying IT $20,000 for it, where does that come back in if it's not passed through to some other external body?
I asked basically the same question to Ms. Bucy, so I'm going to let her answer it to you as well.
We think too much alike, apparently.
It will be what could be viewed as a revenue loss to general corporate. However, this formula, which is charging the $20,000 for the AS400 storage libraries stored on the AS400, is probably close to 30 years old, and it really hasn't been revisited in the last 10 or 12 years. So, it was something we would have revisited anyway, but we knew this was coming. And what IT has done in the interim, and as you probably all recall, starting with this year, IT is billing non-general corporate funds for their services. So, while it may not be that $20,000 is coming from the Child Support Services Fund next year, there are a number of funds which the Circuit Clerk and the courts control, where IT provides services, and those funds will be being billed. So, actually, the revenue anticipated is actually going up for IT and general corporate fund, even with this change.
Okay, thank you. And then, kind of as a follow-up, we were paying maintenance on this module that we have not been using. Do you know how long we've been paying that?
To my knowledge, we've been paying for it since we converted to JANO, and that was in 2008.
So, in a sense, we're now getting value for our money as opposed to just kind of throwing it away. So, I think that's reasonable to point out as well.
Unusual for government.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie.
Just a clarification, the 24,500 is a one-time?
Yes, that is a one-time expenditure just for the data conversion cost. So, that pays for the labor for the JANO staff to do the actual data conversion. And it also includes some training costs, so they will come and train our staff on how to use that module.
Okay. And JANO has been in place, what, for a decade?
Just since 2008.
Oh, okay.
Or, well, all, yeah.
I was just multiplying times 20,000.
Thank you for your comments and questions, and thank you for coming and talking to us, Ms. Blakeman.
Thank you.
Mr. Kibler's made a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. That's it for budget amendments and transfers. We have a request from the Facilities Director to apply, and if awarded, accept money from DCEO to partially defray the cost of tuning up some of the county's boilers. May I have a motion? Mr. Jay and I think Mr. Hartke. Any discussion?
Was that Mr. Kibler?
Ms. Petrie.
I'm delighted to see that this is a precedent-setting event, that we're going after some grant money. And I do hope that this lays the groundwork of expectation that other entities, when they need to go out and buy or repair anything, that we do look to see if there's grant money to help with the cost.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. We'll forward that to the full board. Moving on to the County Administrator's report. We have a General Corporate Fund Fiscal Year 2013 Budget Report and Budget Change Report, which were handed out. Deb, do you have any comments to make?
Well, there's one thing I would like to point out. It's on the first page of the General Corporate Fund Revenue Projection Report, the top-line property taxes. You have never seen this before. I always project that we will receive all of our property taxes, and this projection shows that we will see a shortfall of $163,200 in our property taxes this year. That is a result of the fact that Carl filed for an exemption on the last day for which an exemption could be filed or close to it. And the exemption is allowed because the legislature changed the law regarding exemptions for health care facilities last year, so it was automatic that they received the exemption. And this all happened too late in the tax cycle to apply the change to the EAV. So, the exemption... So, the exemption is being treated as a certificate of error, which means all the taxing districts with Carl properties within their districts will receive levies that are smaller than what they anticipated when they adopted their levies. If you look at the back of this handout, the last page, you'll see the impact on the county's levies. The General Corporate Fund is the largest loss, at 163,200, basically, but, um, Mental Health Board will lose 74,000, the DD Board, about 68,000, um, 41,000 to Highway, 20,000 to County Bridge. All of these officials are aware that their revenue this year will be less than what was budgeted or projected. This is a one-time event, it will not affect, um, property taxes for next year. Um, we will be able to use the PTAL or Tax Caps calculation based on the original aggregate levy that we thought we would collect this year, so it will not impact next year or ensuing year property taxes, but it is something that we will be dealing with this year. Even with that, the rest of the revenues, um, are coming in very solidly close to where budgeted, so with the exception of, the real estate transactions are still up, so you see about a third of the way down that first group, that revenue line is projected to come in at 342,000 more than originally budgeted, which is the bulk of why we think we'll have 101% instead of just 100% of revenues this year. Um, if you turn to the expenditure side, right now, it looks like we will underspend personnel expenditures. I've looked and looked at this, based on the current numbers, this is what the projection would be, but I will be amazed if it is actually this good at the end of the fiscal year. Um, we're probably going to overspend on commodities, and if you look at purchase document stamps, you'll see that one is projected that will spend 340,000 more than budgeted, that correlates back to the revenue from the, um, real estate transactions on page one, so those sort of balance each other out. Um, the summary shows that, based on projected revenues and expenditures, we would end this year with a $300,000 revenue positive year, which keeps us, um, at or slightly above our current fund balance goal. Um, on paper, the budget right now has a 722,770 deficit, and that's primarily due to two changes that have been made, one for, um, forgiving the nursing home loan of 330,001, and one for, uh, the corrections contract, which cost us $141,000. So, those are the highlights, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of them, the Budget Change Report, uh, only change from last month is the $141,000 for corrections.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes, Deb, I know we've talked about this before, but I, I, I have to ask, how many other taxing bodies are impacted by this exemption, um, that Carl received?
The most significant, um, bodies to be impacted are, the Urbana School District is the number one, and their loss in revenue is about $3 million. The Urbana Park District and City of Urbana also are significantly impacted, and then other Urbana taxing districts, and then Parkland is impacted because they're a countywide, like we are, um, so, any countywide taxing district is impacted to an extent.
So, we do, we know that it's not like a long-term issue with tax caps, we don't have to worry about losing ground because of the tax cap laws.
Right.
But, um, is it, is it a flaw in the exemption mechanism that allows for an entity like this to apply for the exemption in such a way that essentially these taxing bodies set their rates without knowing that this is going to be approved or not?
It is, and in fact, your Real Estate Tax Cycle Group has already begun talking to legislators to ask that the lobby change, to require that that deadline be 90 days earlier than it is now, so that this would not reoccur. It's not likely to occur with us again, because we know we have two major hospitals, and from now on, they're going to be exempt, but in other areas where something like this could occur, so that is being, that has been proposed, and it's being looked at.
So, like, if a new private clinic-
Right.
-came online-
Yeah.
-that would be where it would happen unexpectedly?
Well, and, and any of those entities, that they be required to file by September 30th instead of December 30th.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I should mention with regard to that, uh, I should thank the State's Attorney's Office, who did considerable research on this. Initially, there was concern that this might essentially be a permanent, you know, several million-dollar-a-year hit to the school districts and so forth, because it could reduce, it'd basically be a ye, a lost year for the purposes of the tax caps, but they did enough investigation to conclude that we can, in fact, uh, adjust property taxes as if we had collected this money in the first place for future years, so it's a hit for those districts. Comment about the Urbana Schools, I think Mr. Quisenberry could confirm this, but, uh, I believe that they were holding, uh, most of this money in escrow.
Yeah, I think it's been the, I, I don't speak for the school district, but I think it's been their practice, as this has been ongoing, to escrow this money so that they wouldn't be caught.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Carter. Yep. Well, I could say the state law is, uh, hi, as I understand it, hinges around the provision of, uh, indigent care, so if the hospital provides essentially m, as much, as much or more value in care to the indigent as it would receive, as it would pay in, in the, uh, as it would receive for the tax exemption, then they're entitled to the tax exemption. Well, we lost, uh, yeah, million dollars.
We lost half a million dollars, 560 something.
I would love for you to go to Springfield and explain that to the legislature, Mr. Carter, I mean, I'm, uh, the law, the laws are entitled to the exemption, and, and the treasurer's got to give it to them, if the court says, he's got to give it to them. Well, as, as Ms. Bucy said, uh, you know, the, uh, those involved in, in the property taxes here at the county level are already talking to legislators to try to make sure that this, that at least, you know, we can't help us, but we may be able to help other counties that, that fall into the same trap.
And, and I'm sorry, but Rick, I'm saying that, I, I've been on the board of Champagne County Healthcare Consumers ever since it formed, and we have a problem with them about this stuff.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Carter, it's a, it's a, I mean, it's a tough issue getting, getting care provided to the indigent. I mean, Carl is a, is a major employer and does a lot of good in the community, but this is an issue where people are going to have considerable disagreements over whether they're entitled to this exemption or not.
But now, they taking up all my little neighborhood, where I used, I just go out and get enough food, gone back to the house, they done destroyed that, and closed the streets, I can't cut and go home like, oh, oh, man.
I hear you. Are there any other comments or questions on the County Administrator's Reports? Not, I would entertain a motion to receive them and place them on file. Mr. Quisenberry and Mr. Rosales, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no. Uh, thanks, Deb. Uh, the next item, this is the tail end of the item that we took up under policy, related to the re, the reclassification of the Champagne County, uh, GIS consortium positions. Uh, the, the, this is essentially setting the salary ranges based on the output of the Job Content Evaluation Committee. Uh, may have a motion to forward this to the full board. Mr. Kurtz, uh, second, Mr. Esri, any additional discussion that didn't happen during policy? Uh, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Forward that. And finally, uh, Deb has a financial forecast for a couple of our key funds, uh, this is a memorandum that's included in the packet. Uh, she also has a brief presentation, uh, going over this stuff, which I will ask her to give now. And, uh, just to put this in some context, this is essentially because we're getting ready to go into the budget cycle for fiscal year 2014, and we need to have an idea where some of these funds stand, so Deb, take it away. Sorry, I guess I shouldn't, I guess we should have brought this on. Free advertising for the projector maker.
Okay. Um, this is a financial forecast for the General Corporate, Public Safety, Sales Tax, and Capital Asset Replacement Funds. The objective of this forecast is to provide to you, the County Board, um, facts and information regarding these three funds, as they interrelate with each other, as you embark upon, as, as Chris said, the budget process and decision-making with regard to moving forward, um, and how these funds are managed. This forecast was developed by looking at our recent past, the last five years of time, and how our money has been spent and how it has come in, and then, looking forward, uh, using information we know from the past and information we know based on today's economic environment and what we might anticipate, to look at a five-year forward look with fiscal 13, this current fiscal year as the base year, and then four years out from there. So, in this forecast, there are some key assumptions for the General Corporate Fund, they're in your packet, they're here, I only want to highlight the ones where there are notes, because you can see what they are. The first one is the property tax, which is projected to increase by 4.88% in fiscal 2014. Uh, we already know that the CPI for property tax increases in 2014 is 1.7%, however, in this current year, 2013, we are paying off an early retirement incentive debt that has been paid out of the IMRF fund, and that has been funded every year from the property tax for the IMRF fund, which gives us $263,000 of property tax that we can reallocate to the General Corporate Fund in fiscal 2014, because the IMRF fund will not need it. Historically, the General Corporate Fund has given some of its property tax, uh, growth ability to the IMRF fund when it needed it, so it's logical that we would make, take that step. Uh, if you go down a ways, you see rent is projected to go up 122.4% in fiscal 2014, that's the result of the fact that ILEUS, uh, paid rent for their facility in advance, they paid through this current year, 2013, and those rent payments were received in prior fiscal years, the last one, I believe, was received in 2011. So, we will see an increase in our rent line of about $400,000 in fiscal 14. The, the, to capital fund, uh, and we'll look at this a little bit later, but that increases 356%, that's an expenditure in fiscal 2014, and that's a result of the fact that the Facilities Committee has recommended, and that has been built into these projections, um, the set aside of $313,000 starting in fiscal 2014 to fund roof replacements, and every following year of this projection includes those roof replacements. The projection also includes an additional $125,000 to begin funding, uh, capital future reserve for all the technology and equipment that has not been funded in the past several years. And finally, in debt, just in looking forward, you'll see that our debt expenditures begin to decline, especially in 16 and 17. In fiscal year 16, we will pay off a $52,500 loan from the Regional Planning Commission to General Corporate for this building, that will end its 20-year cycle at that point, so we'll see $52,500 in savings, and in fiscal 2017, in 16, we pay off the debt service for the Highway Building, which General Corporate's been paying about $95,000 a year for that debt service, it's paid off in 16, so we'll see that savings in fiscal year 17. Um, the General Corporate Fund revenue, as you all know, property tax is a big piece of it, 20%, 27% of the total revenue, and because of the concentrated receding in the second and third quarters of the fiscal year, we have to be, we have to maintain a fund balance to cover the first quarter of the fiscal year to get to the point where we start receding that. Historically, um, the property tax exhibits stable and steady increases, which are reflective of the stability of the local economy here in terms of property values and growth. We have not yet seen a real significant decrease in, uh, equalized assessed valuations of properties in Champagne County, that's partly because, uh, what we have seen is when agricultural land increases, it has correlated to times when residential property values have decreased, and they've sort, sort of counterbalanced each other, so that's a benefit we have. Uh, projections going forward anticipate no increase to the equalized assessed value and modest CPI increases, so you can see that the property tax has increased every year, even throughout the economic recession, and is projected to con, continue those gradual increases of about 2, 2 and 1/4% per year. Mr. Kibler.
Thank you, Deb. Does 2014 reflect that we're going to be at 13 months and whatnot, since we're changing our calendar year?
The property tax will always only be 12 months at a time.
Oh, so-
It's not impacted by the change in the, you know-
Personnel wages and health insurance, those percentages that you had?
None of this takes into account that 13-month year.
Okay.
Okay. Sales taxes are another, uh, primary revenue source for us, the sales taxes that we're looking at here are the one cent collected in the unincorporated, the quarter cent county-wide general sales tax, and the use tax, which is collected by the state and distributed back to us based on population, and the sales taxes reflect economic trends. So, here's what happened to sales taxes from 2008 through 2012 in terms of percent of change each year. In 2008, all the sales taxes were up, the quarter cent was up the lowest rate at about 4%, the one cent and the use tax were both up over 10%, and then 2009 hits, and they all dropped significantly, the largest drop in the history that we have going back to 1980 in sales taxes. They, the use tax continued to drop in 2010, whereas the quarter cent and one cent rebounded a little bit at about a 2% level, and then you can kind of read it out from there. The projections for going forward are that the quarter cent would see an annual increase of about 2.75%, the use tax 2%, and the one cent flat, because the one cent is more volatile, and, um, I do believe we may be seeing some decreasing, um, retail in, in our unincorporated area where we collect the one cent, so it is projected at a flat rate. So, although those were volatile, when you look at the combined totals, you see there was a significant drop in 2009, and it took us until, basically, 2013 to get back to the 2008 levels of sales taxes, but there has been a slow and steady, you know, progression moving forward, and this, this projection anticipates that that will continue. The income tax is, um, another, uh, fairly important, uh, component of our sales and income taxes from the state. This, this diagram doesn't directly correlate to what we actually received each fiscal year, because in fiscal year nine and 10, we only received 10 months of revenue, and in fiscal year 11 and 12, we received 13 months of revenue, so I equalized it a little bit, taking, you know, one, one, borrowing back, so you're only looking at what would really look like 12 months of revenue in 11 and 12, and 11 months in nine and 10. And you can see that it has also been increasing, the current trends look like the income tax should continue increasing, but if you look at it, you see all the way out to 2017, we barely get back to where we were in 2008. So, this has de, definitely been an area where we have certainly lost income.
I like that approach by the state, they'll give you 10 months this year, and then they get up and giving you 13 months.
And they're still two months behind from where they were, yeah.
They're hoping we didn't notice that.
Yeah, I think so. Um, fees are about 16% of the total revenue for General Corp, they're defined by statute, the County Board has a discretion in many fees to determine whether to adopt them at all, and if they do adopt them, whether to adopt them at the level, uh, at the statutory maximum that the state has, um, has defined. Some fees can be set by the County Board above the statutory mandate if the County Board does a cost analysis study to document that the actual cost of providing those services is more than the statutory maximum. The Champagne County actually did that in 2003, and correspondingly, we increased the sheriff and county clerk fees. Additionally, in 2003, the legislator, legislature increased all the statutory mandates for the Circuit Clerk fees, and the County Board adopted Resolution Number 4725, adopting all of those new maximums in 2003, which was really good for 2004, because you can see the Circuit Clerk fees went up a little over a half a million dollars in that year as a result of those fee increases. We paid for the MAXIMIS study to have the cost analysis study done, and you can see it had little impact on our overall fee revenue. With the sheriff's fees, the ones that can be increased are for service process, civil service process, things like that, and he has competitors in the private market, and he will tell you that it's not such a good idea to increase those fees, because he'll just lose business, and you could actually end up bringing in less. So, at this- So, at this time, we're not recommending another fee study because there wasn't really that much of an impact. You can see that overall, fees tend to remain fairly stable. This is a look at the general corporate fund fees total over this period in time. Ironically, they went up in nine and 10 slightly, dropped again in 11, but are projected, again, to remain fairly stable. And some of that increase in nine and 10 was probably a result of the counties initiating a contract with Harrison Harris for collections. And we saw some increases in collections on back fees that were owed to us in arrears. So, then we move on to expenditure. Personnel represents 72% of the total expenditure for the general corporate fund, and these projections anticipate that we would continue to see wage increases at rates that are similar to what the board has done in the last two years, which are right at about a 2% level. The projections also anticipate that health insurance costs will go up 10% per year, and I'm just hoping that that is enough. So, this is what personnel looks like over this 10-year period. You can see, again, that general corporate was at its highest point in 2009, and then we began cutting. And it isn't until 2013 that we get back to the level where we were in 2009. And moving forward, the only thing I will say about personnel projections, this is based on currently what we spend for personnel. It's very difficult to take into consideration what the impact of attrition or turnover will have. Sometimes it saves us money in some areas, and sometimes it doesn't. So, do I really think that we'll see personnel expenses go up actually this much every year? Well, the furthest year out, I would say, probably not, but this is like a worst-case scenario for you to look at in terms of what we would expect in projections.
Does it reflect no change in headcount?
It reflects no change in headcount, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Commodities and services are basically projected to increase with an anticipated rate of inflation. However, with commodities, we tend to be spending less and less as there is a diminishing need to purchase some commodities because of the improvements that we get through technology. So, those, and you go back to the key assumptions, you'll see exactly where the percentages are. Services overall are anticipated to increase annually at 2%. Some services are not anticipated to increase much at all. Others will probably go up more like 5% or 6%. That's worked through in the total, but at the end of the day, the total looks right at about 2%. And again, you can see that in 2009 and 10, we cut back extremely in what we spent on commodities and services. And it isn't until about 2015 that we get back to actually spending what we were spending in fiscal 2008, based on these projections. Gary?
Could you describe what we're talking about as... I'm sorry. Could you describe as what we're talking about in the area of services?
Well, there are a lot of them, but basically, off the top of my head, we have services for the sheriff. We have utilities costs, food services, MetCAD services, any kind of professional services, attorney's fees, engineering fees, although we don't have that many of that in general corporate fund. And then, a lot of the repair and maintenance lines for the physical plant department are considered services as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, waste hauling, custodial, you know, all those kinds of things. Transfer to capital. An annual transfer to capital is to cover for the purchase of vehicles other than the sheriff's vehicles, and technology and furnishings for the general corporate fund departments to be replaced in the next fiscal year, and ideally, on an amortized contribution basis for all of those items to be replaced in their next cycle, their next life cycle. In 2007, the county board also initiated transfers to capital for facilities and improvements and replacement. Since 2008, so what you're going to see here, the transfer to capital has not been fully funded. All we have transferred is what we needed to transfer in order to replace whatever was scheduled to be replaced in that fiscal year. So, there's a great big jump in fiscal 2014 because it includes that $313,000 recommended by facilities to finance to begin financing roof replacement projects, and that's included in all years. The additional $125,000 to get back on track with funding future reserve, which we will not be able to do until fiscal 15, when we add another $125,000 to that figure, and then, we will be back on track for funding future reserve of all the technology and equipment that is covered by the capital fund. So, in summary, this is what the general corporate fund looks like, and you can see that in 2008, we spent more than we brought in. But since then, nine, 10, 11, and 12, every year, we have managed to keep our expenditures under our revenue levels. Right now, 13, as we talked about earlier, this is based on the current budget. There is a deficit of expenditure, of revenue to expenditure. Moving forward, based on these projections that we've just looked at, 2014 looks balanced, but then in 2015, 16, and 17, expenditure begins to creep ahead of revenue. That is the structural deficit of the general corporate fund. We have about 50% of our revenues in property taxes and sales and income taxes that tend to grow with the rate of inflation or grow as the economy grows. And we have about 50% of our revenues, which are the fees, and then miscellaneous revenues, which include inter-fund transfers and some intergovernmental revenues, which tend not to increase that much. So, we have 72% of our expenditure is in these personnel areas, where they constantly go up, and only 50% of our revenues are simultaneously increasing based on that, those cost-of-living factors. So, it's just something that the county... It's always been that way, it's just true, but it requires careful management. And with including the capital numbers now in fiscal 14 through 17 to maintain that, it's easy to abandon capital first, and it's just an area that the county board is going to have to be cognizant of in your decision-making moving forward. Fund balance and the forecast. Our fund balance, you can see, and starting at the beginning of this time period, was below where it needed to be in fiscal 2008. That followed a period of time where we loaned a lot of money, where we basically gave money from our fund balance to the nursing home between 2005, 2008. That's how it got to the point where it was below the fund balance goal. It got worse in 2009, but in 2012 and 13, we have managed to get the fund balance right at or right above the fund balance goal. But you can see with the projections that have been provided, it would look, we would see an increasing, you know, shift in our ability to maintain that. So, again, that's important.
Deb, do these numbers that you're going through with us right now include the money we'll potentially be getting back by the reduction in our debt service that you just talked about a few minutes ago?
Yes. All those key assumptions are built into all these totals, and I know this is kind of like flying at 30,000 feet, but it's all built into that. Okay, so, the public safety sales tax fund directly correlates to the general corporate fund because you have discretion in how you use these monies, and obviously, a lot of what occurs in general corporate fund are public safety initiatives. When we first adopted the public safety sales tax fund, it was primarily for the debt service. There are, basically, the revenue source is the sales tax, the quarter cent sales tax. We have, at times, had inter-fund transfers from the courts automation fund because we pay for justice technology out of public safety, and courts automation has also provided some of the monies for some of those purchases when it was appropriate. You can see in 2008, we had interest earnings, but we really haven't had any since then because the interest rate is so low. They're there, but you can't even see it because it's like a hundred dollar, and it's low. The expenditures for the public safety sales tax fund, as I said, debt service is the largest expenditure from the fund. You'll see that in 2011, it dropped. That's because we paid off the last satellite jail bond debt service in 2010. And when we issued the courthouse bonds, there was that one year where, before we ramped up then and expedited the debt service payments for the courthouse and juvenile detention center bonds. So, in 2011, we spent less for that reason. The 5% for delinquency prevention programming is there. It dropped when, it's based on 5% of the previous year's revenues, so it dropped when the revenue dropped, but is back on track and moving forward, anticipates whatever growth the sales tax sees will also increase there. Justice technology, we pay for the New World system, which the sheriff uses. The maintenance on that system is about $100,000 a year. And then, the technology replacement for the state's attorney, sheriff, court services, and coroner are paid out of the public safety sales tax fund. And the sales, the public safety sales tax basically purchased originally the Jano system and the New World system in 2002, and now just pays for the maintenance of those systems and that technology. Facilities maintenance, for many, many years, we've paid the utilities costs for the public safety buildings from, as a transfer back to general corporate from public safety. And then, finally, additional transfer to general corporate. In 2008, nine, 10, and 11, when general corporate was faced with so much difficulty because of having to cut back because of lost revenues, we transferred additional monies from public safety sales tax in those years. That stopped with the fiscal 12 budget and has not occurred since then. And then, you'll also see that little purple in 2013, that is the contract with ILPP for the jail needs assessment study that is currently being done. So, when you look at the public safety sales tax fund, you see in those years, when we did the additional transfer to general corporate, we were spending more than we were bringing in. You see the correlating drop in the sales tax revenue in 2009, like we saw in all the other sales tax revenues, and that it has increased since then. Right now, 2011 and 2012, there was a slight change there, but moving forward, we project that this sales tax will increase at about 2.5%, slightly less than the general sales tax, which includes vehicles, and there seems to be, that seems to work better for the general quarter cent. The green area shows the fund balance for the public safety sales tax funds, which is maintained right at about the $4 million level, which you probably all think, my goodness, that looks really good. Well, here's why. Because the primary commitment of the public safety sales tax fund is the bond debt service, and our bond ordinances require that we have 125% of each year's debt service on hand so that we can abate the property tax, which you do every year for that debt service, so that we pay for it with the sales tax instead. So, you can see that after we spent down, we spent more than we were bringing in, that the fund balance dropped by 2010, and that's the year and also in which the debt service dropped, but it is back up, and the debt service is increasing, which causes the fund balance goal to also increase. So, we're slightly below it in 14, 15, and 16, but get back to the point where we're on track by fiscal 2017. Finally, the capital asset replacement fund. This is looking back to when it was first initiated in fiscal 2001. And one reason I wanted to show you this, because from fiscal 2001 to 2007, it was fully funded, with the exception of fiscal year 2003, because, again, the recession in 2002 caused us to not fully fund it in '03, but that only lasted for one year. So, to get it started, general corporate had to be putting in more than $700,000 to start, to get started, where you're buying everything that needs to be bought next year and doing the amortized schedule, which is basically five years, for everything else. But you can see that once you get started, you know, four, five, six, that number comes down significantly once you've generated the base. Then, you look at eight through 12, and all we've funded is the current expenditures. So, we're back to a point where we have to go back to what we did in 2001 in order to get it going again. Once we get it going, it will come down as an expenditure again and be more stable. This is looking at 2007 through 2017, and you can see that the fund balance by 2013 has dropped significantly. It's dropped by $800,000 since its high point in fiscal 2010. Revenue has been less than expenditure each year, up until 2014, where, again, we're anticipating transferring those monies from general corporate so we can, we begin putting in more revenue than expenditure.
You showed that trailing off of the fund balance, and this is where it's going, right? The fund, the general corporate fund balance...
Oh, our general corporate fund balance is coming in here. That's right.
That downward trend in the fund balance is because we'd be putting more in...
Because we're, because we would be doing...
Closing for money.
That's part of it, for sure. Another part of it would be if we actually spend as much as was projected in expenditure because of personnel and things like that.
This is what it...
Yeah, it's like an $800,000 swing.
$1,000,000 a year, yeah.
That's right. And the treasurer will tell you, he keeps, he keeps the capital asset replacement fund and the general corporate fund in combined funds. So, they do, whatever is in capital asset replacement in the fund balance works to the benefit of the general corporate fund, especially in this time period when we're waiting for the property taxes to come in. But as you can see, it's so low that there's not as much there to support the general corporate fund as there was back in 2010. Continuing long-term challenges that have been documented by you, the county board, that impact the general corporate fund are maintaining the fund balance, continuing to work on the development of a comprehensive plan for facilities and campuses, but with this forecast, I think you have begun doing that. And especially the next bullet point, appropriation of funding for capital replacement improvement. And then, one that's out there, and we don't talk about it all that often, but replacement of the real estate tax cycle and accounting system software has been identified to you by your outside auditor as something that we need to look at. So, we're starting to work on facilities and those issues, but we need to not forget that there are still some other items out there that will require the board's attention as we move forward.
I was going to point out something, too. I think all the board members understand this, but for anybody who's watching, you talk about a 12.5% fund balance. Essentially, that means that the end of the year, the general corporate fund has 12.5%... Theory has 12.5% balance on paper. The general corporate fund isn't sitting there with 12.5% of revenues in the bank. In fact, right now, it's negative, and we had to borrow a million dollars from the public safety sales tax fund to compensate for that. So, this is, this is not a big pot of money...
No.
...that is sitting there not earning interest. It's essentially just a difference in revenue, the integrated difference in revenues or expenses over the long term.
Right. It's what you need to have in December in order to be able to pay your employees through May. I mean, that $4 million becomes $400,000 by the middle of March.
Ms. Chris.
So, it's essentially a cash flow management goal...
Exactly.
...to make sure that we don't have to borrow money to make payroll while we're waiting for our real estate taxes to come in. So, it's not some magic bank account that we're trying to have...
No.
...a certain amount of money in.
No.
It's a cash flow, time-of-the-year situation.
That's right.
That's correct. It's an annual snapshot. It's not a pool, it's not a pot of money.
Yeah, and for taxing bodies who do not have it, they would probably be required to issue tax anticipation warrants because that's the only way to manage then, that revenue stream that comes in at such a concentrated time to cover all your cash needs.
I'm sorry, Josh.
My question's kind of back on the public safety fund. The idea that we have to, what is it, 1.25 years' worth of debt service in reserve, is that an ordinance passed by this body? Is that a requirement by our bonding agencies? Is that state requirement?
That's, the bond ordinances require that.
Okay. And that ordinance, bond ordinance was, was that a state bond ordinance or our bond ordinance that we passed as a category?
Well, it's a requirement. It's a statutory requirement, but it is in every bond ordinance for debt service that you have done, that is along those lines.
It's not 1.25 years, right? It's 125%.
It's 125% of that year's payment.
Right, which adds up to 1.25 years' worth of payments.
Not necessarily. It depends on, I mean, it's just based on that current year. If next year's debt service was much lower or much higher, it wouldn't be...
Right, and then that fund adjusts from there.
Right.
Okay. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
And I, to just be honest, I really don't foresee the situation of the story where Champaign County doesn't get any revenues for 15 months straight, so...
Well, but the other reason for it is that, you know, that looks like $4 million, but we make those principal and interest payments on January 1st.
Right.
So, at the end of January, it's not $4 million sitting in public safety sales tax because, yeah, we basically just paid it all out.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, it's not, it's not one...
It's not sitting there all the time.
So, it's next year's payment, kind of what we're doing, because we pay it at the beginning of the year.
Exactly.
It's the next quarter of the year.
That's where I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thanks. One other comment I was going to make about sales taxes. One other comment I was going to make about sales taxes, there is some effort by the feds to work on, I guess what we could call the Amazon bill, which, if the feds can figure out how to force online retailers to actually collect sales taxes, could have a significant impact on our sales tax revenue. impact on our sales tax revenue in addition to preventing online retailers from continuing to rob local businesses by helping online taxpayers cheat on their taxes. But get off my soapbox now, but that's another thing that might work out to our good in the long run. Any other comments? Ms. Petrie.
Yes. On page 101 in commodities and services, under commodities, is that where the utilities are listed?
It was services, I think.
Utilities are in services.
Okay, but it's in this graph. Okay. So looking at this graph, and it says to me that it would certainly help the outcome of this graph if we put more and more emphasis on working toward energy efficiency with all of our buildings, because our utility bills are, they always take my breath away when I look at them every, every month. And so that brings me back to, well, I think it's in our agenda, but it's on page 96, number three, and that is appropriation for roofs to be replaced in those years. And my takeaway from the last facilities committee meeting was the sense that the committee members were acknowledging roofs may be one of the things that need to be repaired, but they preferred more flexibility in the terminology of that fund so that if advantages, there might be advantages to do other things that are needed to be done within the county, especially if grant money was available to do it. So could that word roofs be replaced with something else that was more generalized?
Well, the numbers are based on the recommendation that was presented to facilities and where roofs were identified. There is nothing that keeps the county board from spending that money on something else if it's determined that it isn't required for a roof. This is just to get us started in funding. The department budget that that money goes into is the capital asset replacement facilities budget. We will put money in and earmark it for certain things, but that doesn't mean that that's what it has to be spent on. We use flexibility in that fund as much as possible. You know, when we first started capital asset replacement, we had printers for every department. We've managed to get rid of printers through our copier services contract, but where sometimes money was reserved for a printer, maybe a department needed a laptop, so we, what had been reserved for the printer could now get used for the laptop. And moving forward, that's how we do it. I would expect that anything spent out of the facilities capital asset fund is going to be directed by this board.
Ms. Reguire. Being involved in some of the discussions of the roofs of the buildings and the maintenance of the buildings and working for the university's facilities and services and the discussion about, you know, the budget itself and its likelihood that it'll be unbalanced. If one of the roofs of the buildings go out and it's $300,000, it's like one of our payments for payroll. So if we put it off and we need it repaired or have to do it, and we don't have the funds in this fund that we're trying to build, then we have a problem. So hopefully, that we're ready to work on, you know, having this fund for facilities because we put it off for a long time, and there's really a huge debt in our facilities budget. So we also still have an issue where the nursing home could lose money from Medicaid that we've talked about in the last few months. So I appreciate all this information about where our budget's going. I'm interested in some of these issues of energies, of energy efficiency, but I like the direction we're going with this. Thank you.
I think it's a good point. If we were a company, we'd be showing a loss every year as a result of not, of the depreciation we'd be taking on those buildings. I mean, the buildings are aging. We don't have to claim that as an expense, but every year in which we let a building get a year older without contributing it to its upkeep is essentially a phantom expense. And I think what we're doing is not so much saying we need to start investing in buildings as we need to stop not investing in our, in our buildings. Ms. Burksen.
Actually, it wouldn't if we were, it would be, we'd be showing a profit if we could be taking all that depreciation because I was spending money.
We save it on our taxes if we, if we paid them. Any additional comments or questions for Ms. Bucy? If not, I want to say thank you for the effort that went into this. I think this is one of the better pictures we've gotten in the last several years of where we've come from and where we're going, and hopefully, we'll be able to use this in the budget process and stick to this. There's no other business for finance. I have no chair's report. Items for consent would be A2, D1 and 2, E1, and F3. Thanks for the finance.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. That was an excellent report. Thank you, Deb. Let's move on to justice and social services. Ms. Burksen.
Come on down. Very briefly. If somebody want to move to accept the monthly reports?
I make a motion to accept all the reports and place them on file.
James and Mitchell. Okay, all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The other thing is you have a resolution at your desk. You remember some time ago, a judge in the western part of the state ruled that people on mandatory sentences, which you can have for all sorts of things like traffic, could not serve their sentences on an anklet. They had to be in the jail. And that cost, you know, the cost for that is about 20 people, about half a million dollar a year. It's all over the state, it costing you money. And in addition, of course, when you put somebody in jail, he loses his job, very often his home, sometimes his family, and he's not likely to get another job. So the whole community suffers. Whereas if you put a guy on an ankle bracelet, he pays for the ankle bracelet, he pays for probation, he keeps his job, he keeps his home, he keeps his family, and he keeps paying his taxes. So, you know, we really have a very big interest in having people, suitable people, serve their sentences on anklets. So Naomi and Ferricks have been working very hard on getting a law through the legislature that says that home detention is suitable, that it serves for mandatory sentences. And what this does is say we support that.
Well, I was just going to move that we adopt this resolution.
Any discussion? Yeah.
This was a change, what, did you say, three years ago or so? I remember when this happened. A couple of years ago. I remember this happened.
Yeah.
It kind of hampered what, especially here in the county, we were doing with sentencing. And it, it is a disadvantage. It's a disadvantage for everybody, I think. It's an extra cost to our court system, and it's also a cost to, you know, a nonviolent individual, non-crime individual that could better be served in home detention. So I, I hope this passes. Thank you for bringing this forward, Ms. Burksen.
Just two quick comments. One, this obviously doesn't mean that everybody gets let out of jail and goes on home detention. This is still subject to the discretion of the sheriff as far as who would be eligible for this and who would not. And second, this decision by this judge is costing us half a million dollars a year, taxpayers' money. So absolutely, we should support this.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. That's all I have, so.
Thank you. At this point, there's no other business. Call for adjournment. So moved, Kibler, Second, James, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carried. Oh, yeah, sorry. On your desk is a flyer. There will be, Dr. Kalmanoff has rescheduled his, his presentation on ILPP. It's going to be, going to be April 17, Wednesday evening, 6:15 to 8:15, Urbana Public Library. And it's, it's, let me see, who's presenting? I'm sorry, what? Okay.
Yes, sir.
There's your flyer. Thank you.